Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for the School of Times Speedway for March 12th, 2019. We are working from a seven-item agenda. The first item is to approve the minutes of February 12th, 2019.
Before you do that, Mr. President, I'd like to recommend that you not only approve the minutes of February 12th, but also the minutes of the executive session of February 19th. I believe you could make a motion to approve both.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of February 19th and also the executive meeting prior to that, February 19th.
I'll second.
Thank you. Let's remove the second. Any discussion? All those in favor? opposed? You guys just four zero.
Two sets for the regular meeting of the 12th and two sets for the executive meeting of February 19th. Start sliding those down. Who's on the end? Mr. Disney, will you hold these for me so that I can file them?
Do that.
Thank you.
Item number two, present the 2019-2020 Student Parent Handbook.
Keyword is "present." We are, as we have in the past, not looking to approve this, these changes, but instead looking to present the recommended changes, to take input and questions from the board both this evening and individually over the next 30 days if we have anything. And I need to say with full understanding that we always bring this to you very early in the process so that we can have it printed for the opening of school. Undoubtedly, there will be Indiana code that changes, and this is a long session after April, so eventually in April, we'll ask you to approve this with the understanding that any changes that are required by law would be there. And I would further even go so far as to say the handbook will contain the current policy on acceptable computer use. That policy has to change, but it will not be until May or June that we are able to get those changes. In fact, Technology Committee is meeting tomorrow to review recommendations, and then I'd like, Mr. Gay and I have made plans to work through that. We've had counsel work on that. So, having said that, Mr. Disney, what are we proposing to be changed? And please take us through every one, read every one, every routine. No.
You have two documents in your packet. One of those is just a briefing of each one of the changes. The second document you have is literally a copy of the handbook that we have put in red, the changes or strike-throughs in red. Most of the changes that you will see are date changes, name changes, just semantic things that take place from year to year. There's not changes of policies or procedures necessarily until you get later on into this document. So, I'd like you to turn to page. There is a, like Mr. Hall mentioned, there is a section on page 13 that has to do with the computer use, and we are currently working on that. As you can see in there, there's a reason for that. There's a place in there where you describe what the Internet is, and I think we've gone beyond that, and we will make some changes to that. Biggest change I want you to pay attention to or look at is on, starts on page 68, on page 68 of this document. Prior to page 68, we're talking about date changes, name changes, nothing of significance. On page 68 of the document, in B, definition of terms and honor, pre-advanced placement or AP courses. It's more of a philosophy that we are changing the wording in this from at a faster rate, which used to be the way we did it, to more in-depth, more depth of knowledge in our pre-AP courses.
I'm going to interrupt, Mr. Smith. What we're recommending is a change. We're not changing it.
Correct. Correct.
Go ahead, Mr. Disney.
Can you talk to us about what that means? Is that actually a decrease in coverage? Is that a...
It's more semantics than, the faster pace wording was scaring a lot of people late for AP, and it wasn't really symbolic of what AP or course program really is. It's really, getting into AP and AP, it's really about going into more depth. So, the scope of things haven't changed at all with this. It's just a better description of what we actually do in the classes.
So, we're not going to cover less more slowly.
Correct. Just, the wording describes better what we do.
If you look on page 69 in the Honor Dual Credit Courses, there's two lines that were added in this section. The line, one of the lines you can read there said, "Students must meet certain placement requirements," and this is determined by the university to qualify for dual credit. That's always been the case. We just didn't have it in there. And what that means is, is a student could take a dual-credit course, but if they didn't have a qualifying score on an ACT or SAT test, they wouldn't get credit for it. So, it's now in there. And the last line in there is that students that are enrolled in honors dual-credit courses are required to take the semester exam, and both of those have been happening. We just didn't have them in the handbook.
But that begs an explanation. If a student has perfect attendance in a semester, they may opt out of one of their final exams. What we're saying now is, it can't be the college one.
However, I guess my question would be, because this is what happened back in the day, you took the exam, but you could make it not count. Is that still the case?
We are confirming with IB Tech that that is acceptable, and that is our stance is that as long as they are okay with it, you could still opt out of it counting towards your semester grade, even though you still have to take the exam.
Uh huh.
So, we're going to make you take an exam, but it's not going to count? We ought to think how that sounds out loud. Out loud, that doesn't sound very good to me. If it's a dual-credit class and every kid in college takes the exam and it counts, then how can we call it the same thing? I think you ought to go back and talk about that. Maybe you guys are okay with that, but saying that out loud makes me go, huh?
I kind of have some mixed emotions about, I mean, I'm not as bothered by it, I guess, because if we're going to offer the incentive of this, you know, not having to take a final, then, and that's the class that I need to not take the final, then...
Or not have the final count.
Not have the final count, then, you know, I still have to pass it. I still have to study for it. I mean, I still have to do enough work that I'm going to, in the way that kids do in college classes. I don't know, I guess.
This is amazing. We're on opposite sides of this one.
It is.
We're usually in complete agreement on this one.
And it's still tied towards the IB Tech dual credit. It's just really a case of whether it would count towards the semester grade, and that's really what the opt-out policy is for, is being able to opt out.
I guess, I guess my, you know, my thinking on it is, if we're going to have that being the incentive and that be what you get to do with this, then it's really not of the same value to the kid who's taking these classes if, you know, my schedule is six or seven AP slash dual-credit classes, and so therefore I really can't use that incentive.
And we're probably not talking about kids who aren't going to work pretty hard anyway.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, so, and I'm not sure it comes up a ton, but I can remember, I can remember kids, you know, talking about that and...
You're thinking about it differently. Thinking about it that way, I can understand that. What I was thinking about it was, is I'm taking only one dual-credit class, no other AP classes. This is my hardest class, and now, I wanted to take that one, but now I'm going to opt out of that for counting?
Yeah.
I mean, that one sounds to me that, but I can, I suspect most kids who are in a dual-credit class are also at a, these are high achievers, who are really saying, give me one break out of six or seven so that I can concentrate on the others. If that's the reality, I can buy that. Not that my vote counts, I just, saying it out loud, it's hard for me.
That's what I think it is. I think it's that piece, and I think that's exactly well said, that piece of, I've got this crazy schedule of these exams, and I've worked hard and been here every day, and I get to take one of them out of the mix. And I think a lot of things go into the kid choosing which one comes out of the mix. And so, I didn't even mean to start something, but I wondered if that was still the situation.
When did we ever start letting people skip a final exam?
Good question.
I'm serious. 1980s it didn't happen, 19...
Good question.
It's coming on.
Fill us in, Mr. Smith.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Two years in a row, we failed to be a four-star school because of attendance. There was no incentive to be here.
I got you.
So, we said, okay, if we're, what's keeping us from being a four-star school? We're doing all the academic stuff. We just don't have anything that carrot to dangle in front of kids to come to school. And at one time...
Go ahead.
Any class that you had perfect attendance in, the belief of the teachers and our TLA group of teachers that were kind of the advisors to what they thought we needed to look at, said, "If kid's here 183 days, I'd much rather have him here 183 days than 170 days and take the test. I'd rather have him here 183 days and not take the test if he's here every day." So, it was every single class.
Yeah.
It was. Any class that you had perfect attendance in...
Jake's freshman year, they, then, so this would have been 2006, they took attendance in every single class, and so like you would have to figure out, like, oh, okay, you got to have...
Drag myself here and not have an orthodontist appointment.
But it was, that's it. It was things like orthodontist appointments, things that you could not, and so you'd make sure that they were all during second period because you blew it, you know, in September with that ortho appointment, and then you, I mean, it was crazy.
The idea was, not having to take the final was the incentive for good attendance, and good attendance got us overall recognition. Then a new superintendent came in 2007 and said, "That's absolute bunk. We are not going to let kids out of finals just because they had perfect attendance." And you know what? To 1000, that year before, it was the last year we got four-star school, and now all of a sudden, it was back to where we were losing recognition. So, the compromise between the high school principal and the superintendent was, let's find somewhere in the middle, let's let them opt out of one if they have total perfect attendance. So, that's how we got to that one.
Now, I will say, we are kind of addressing both of those concerns, or looking to address both those concerns. We're actually in the process of revamping our finals as well, but with that, we want all kids to take all finals, so we have the data piece of what did they learn, or we can better measure what they learned, but we don't want to lose the incentive of letting kids opt out for perfect attendance. So, what we are looking at for next year is, you take all finals, but if you have perfect attendance, you'll be able to opt out of one of those grades.
If you have one of those grades, it can't, we can take them.
I didn't have perfect attendance.
I have a child who has...
Drag himself to school.
I have two children, one of which never missed a day in Speedway.
The fact that you can choose that after the fact. So, there's still the incentive of, study for all, do your best on all, and then after the fact, if it was just not a good day on that one test day, you can, because you had perfect attendance, can opt out of that impact on your grade. So, we're trying to be the best of both worlds with that. How many students have perfect attendance? You, I was shocked when I first learned how many. We have well over 40. I can't give you the exact number.
Out of 400 and...
Yeah.
It is the most of any school that I've been at in terms of perfect, and this is no absences, no tardies.
About seven or eight percent.
Perfect attendance.
And I'm not saying that's a good thing because they drag themselves to school sick.
Yeah, one time, yeah, yeah.
And what they do is infect everybody else.
Sure.
Oh, not really.
Now, did you ever drag yourself when you're working sick within the last two weeks?
February 13th, after last week's board meeting, I stayed home the first time in a 38-year career. But I didn't have to see people. You could sequester me with masks. I'm guilty. I can say this, the compromise, as it sat on one class, was one that I could support because you have to bend and what thing, and what you're talking about, I like even better.
I do too. I do too.
So, but that, Mr. Harding, is how that came to be after you were a student here.
Between 1995 and 2002.
And we got new...
And we became a four-star school.
Yes, we did. It worked. I will say that it worked.
Now, was it worth it? I don't know. You know, I don't know. I just knew what was keeping us from getting there, and it changed after that.
Boy, that, how come you can't get this discussion moving along, Mr. Disney?
I'm trying. Scheduling guidelines, page 70. Number three, it's, you can see there that students have exhausted all coursework. It used to say seniors. We now have people that are less than seniors that have exhausted coursework in a specific academic area, and they may request a conference with the school administration to explore option of pursuing enrollment in the SPAN program at IU-PUI or the next level online course offering. Now, we are not necessarily promoting IU-PUI, but that's one we've used since 1984. We've also, if there's other courses or available, we would do that. The point of this is, the point of this is, if they've exhausted coursework, they can request to have that coursework done at a university.
And it's also the law. We have to.
Requirements for graduation on this one is just wherever it said ECA, since that no longer exists, it's now I Step 10.
I...
How long till I Step 10 goes away?
Totally don't understand number four though.
Number four...
I found this quite confusing.
We have students who, because of their special ed, what's called individualized education program, working with parents, parents can create and say, "This student will not get a diploma because they will not earn the credits, but they will get a certificate of completion."
I get that.
Okay.
However, what I don't get, I guess, is it doesn't seem to me like that is a, it seems like that's a totally different thing than what used to be number four. So, then, what is, where did what used to be number four go? So, we have seniors who fulfill all requirements and pass, okay. Seniors who fulfill the requirements but don't pass but get a waiver, okay. And then, we used to have students who fulfill the credit requirements, don't pass, don't meet appeal requirements, will receive it. So, we're just, they just don't anymore?
Yeah, this is if, if they, they have to fulfill the credit requirements, but they don't pass the ECA.
Right.
Don't meet appeal requirements. In other words, those seniors that are, that aren't getting a traditional high school diploma are those that are getting the certificate of completion at commencement. I understand what you're saying, that where did that go, that with the ECA not part of that process anymore?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me like the corollary, you know, we would have just changed the words like we did in two and three, so that we would have a seniors who fulfill all credit requirements and do not pass I Step 10 and do not get the waiver, receive a...
Certificate of Completion.
Receive, because this certificate...
Why don't we just make the change the same way we did above?
Yeah, so it seems like we took away a category. Those kids used to get, I mean, I don't care if they do or not, I just, do we realize that we did that? Do we mean to change that? It just seemed to me like, on number four, what we added is not the fix to what we deleted. We added something new, deleted a category that we used to have, and I just didn't know if that was intentional.
And I'm not sure if I can answer that question either, Laura, but one of the things that I think that it's saying here that is, students that are not on diploma track, those students that we, so we maybe need to have another bullet down there, another number down there, that, I see what you're saying. Could we write it, just like the ones above, and instead of putting ECA, put I Step 10 in there, and then...
Are you talking about the students that do not meet the requirements for the diploma grant?
Well, it used to say, so number four used to say, seniors fulfilling all credit requirements who do not pass the ECA, and so if we were in keeping with two and three, we'd change that to do not pass I Step 10, and who do not meet the now waiver requirements used to say, will receive a certificate of completion at commencement. So, we had a, you know, number four is you do this one, not that one. Number four is you do this one and get a waiver. Number, and then four was, you don't pass either, but you get a certificate of completion. And are we just not doing that anymore?
No, you could still qualify for a certificate of completion, so that was just something that was omitted by mistake.
So, it seems like there should be new number, maybe this is, you know, number four, fixed number four, and then the new number five, and then this is six.
Perhaps, but perhaps people who do not pass the I Step 10 and do not meet waiver requirements are taken off a diploma track. Is that the case? They would have the option of coming back for year five, so let's say they didn't, they didn't meet, they could come back for a fifth year to try to still meet those requirements to get a diploma. But they would have the option, but, you know, downside of certificates, obviously that's not a diploma, so in essence, those, if they wanted to opt into the certificate, they would be saying, "We're not interested in pursuing a diploma."
We understand where our problem is here.
Yeah.
We'll rewrite it and get it fixed for the next version.
Yeah, I don't care.
This is, this as it is...
It's an easy thing, yeah.
Yes, I don't, yeah, I don't have a stake in the outcome of it. I just wasn't sure that it was intentional.
But, no, yes, we had that.
I think what we tried to do is swing for too much in one thing. We should have just changed four, added five, moved down six. Moved made five, six. We can do that. It's a good idea.
Yeah.
What else you got for us, Mr. Disney?
The next one is on page 86. And on page 86 is, the graduation requirements have changed in the classes of 20, 21, and 22, or I Step 10 for English Language Arts and Math. And then if you look at the bottom of that page, this is verbatim from the Indiana Department of Education, and basically what it's saying in that first part is those students in class 20, 21, and 22. If you read down through there, the same criteria there, but what it's saying is, we can also start using the pathways as a, as a means to help those students graduate. Because in the class of 2023, students must complete the graduation pathways to graduate, and it lists what those graduation pathways are, and that is earn a high school diploma, learn and demonstrate employability skills, and learn and demonstrate post-secondary competencies. So, the means for graduation has changed. Any questions about the graduation requirements?
Is, this goes back to my questions from the handbook on this stuff. Is the 1, 2, 3 a elements test? Is it an and, 1, 2, and 3? Or is it, is it, you know, is it conjunctive or disjunctive? Is it a 1, 2, or 3? Or is it a...
Are you talking about with the class of 2023?
Yep.
It is, it is a, kind of think of those as three buckets. One of those buckets being, one of those buckets being a high school diploma that you have to earn credits. The second bucket, a student would have to fulfill is demonstrate employability skills, and that could be project-based learning, service-based, work-based.
So, it's, it's an and.
It's a conjunctive.
You have to do all three. Yeah.
Then we need to indicate that, I would say. Either with the graduation pathway requirements for the class of 2023 are all three of the following, colon, or we could probably say the following, you know, put a semicolon after diploma, put a semicolon after skills with an and, and then put the period. Especially like how it is right now, there's no period, there's only periods after two and three, which is problematic anyhow. But just, I think, graduation, I mean, I think, why not?
What you want to do is say, you've got to do all three things.
Yeah.
All we want to, we want to say it grammatically correctly so there cannot be any argument.
Any question, especially for something like this. So, I would say the graduation pathway requirements for the class of 2023 are all three of the following, colon, but then put a semicolon after diploma, the semicolon and the word "and" after skills, and then keep the period after competencies.
And because I'm a recipe kind of a person, Mr. Disney and Mr. Zartman, I want you to rewrite this, and if it's okay with the rest of the board members, then I want you to send what you've rewritten via email to Mr. Gay, who happens to be an English teacher and an attorney, not because she's, but, and have her check it. Because while I don't, I think I could do this in the little red book, I'd prefer, if you're willing to just read it, and then we know what it's going to be, because it will be correct, and it will do what we want, it will, because what I don't want is in the class of 2023, having a parent come up here and say, "I can interpret this differently." We'll all be unhappy if we don't get it right from the start.
I think it's a great suggestion because it does say that you need to go do each one of those things, not just, not just one, but each one of those things.
But you agree that's what's expected? And we, good. You guys know your responsibilities, right? This is why we present this in March, and we bring it back in April in its best version. We don't have to pass it in April if we find something else, which is what I'll add to this discussion. As you look through this, if you find something that's not, let us know, because there's never been a time in my long time doing this, I don't want to say how long, that we haven't had a "for" that should have been a "from," a "the" that or "to" should have been, and we want to fix those, we want this to evolve and live. Because even when I, if next month I'm recommending you pass this, it's going to be with the caveat, understanding there may be legal changes required, there may be grammatical improvements, and I guarantee you, we will have a better policy on computer use because we're finally biting the bullet, and even though we're going to do a new computer policy, it will still, by the time we actually print it, have something in it that has changed, which is entirely appropriate, that we're talking about this on March 12th, 2019, 30 years after the original paper that suggested the World Wide Web was submitted.
[laughing]
It was, by Tim Berners-Lee. He passed it up to the administration in CERN about how to make a World Wide Web go on top of the ARPANET. I love this stuff. I can't wait for the next thing.
Isn't it crazy to think we didn't have that? I mean...
One last thing. One last thing, if we go back to page 70, all of our people may do the SPAN thing at IU, PUI, but that sounds like that's where they have to go. And if that's not the case, then it ought to be something comparable to that.
Such as...
Because what we've said is you got to go to IU, PUI, and the SPAN thing, basically.
Perfect, we'll edit that. I think it's a great idea not to specifically say SPAN or IU, PUI, but say appropriate.
They got to meet with the administration anyway to see what is.
Right, we'll fix that.
Yeah.
We'll fix that.
Collegiate.
We should. We should not be proprietary to a program or a university. The reality is, it is the most accessible for us, or students find it, but we have a student there right now doing this. But if that student was at Butler, or Marion, or whatever, it's giving the student the class they need.
And whatever they're doing has to be approved by whoever they talk to at the administration.
Good idea to get IU, PUI out of there. I wonder if I've heard that before. I might have suggested that last week, but somehow it never got done.
Ask questions.
Great report, Mr. Disney.
Appreciate it, Mr. Hall.
Great. All right, moving on. Item number three, approve the purchase of network equipment as bid through the E-Rate process.
What you have is a summary page of what we have advertised, solicited bids, and accepted the lowest and most appropriate bid to do work on the network at all six of our schools. This is pretty important work, isn't it, Mr. Disney, when we think about all students being on at the same time next week?
Yeah.
All third graders, we found, the good news is, is that the full cost of what we bid is $157,000. E-Rate's going to pay $126,000, and we're going to get all this work for $31,000. This is similar to what we did last year through E-Rate. But what I did this year is I thought maybe you'd like to actually see the designation of, there are two major kinds of computers here, they're, but switches. Those are just high-powered computers dedicated to switching information out to the right place. There are licenses for the programs that run those, that's where Cisco makes its money, and there are cables to connect these computers together, and those wonderful thing called WAPs, Wireless Access Points, that if they're, if they're not in every room, they're in every other room in this district. And so, my recommendation is that you accept these bids, and that we, and the good news is, we don't even pay the $157,000. The government pays the vendor directly, the $126,000, and we pay 31,000. So my recommendation is we accept the bids as recommended.
Laura?
I move that we approve the purchase of the network equipment as bid through the E-Rate process.
Thank you, Laura.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Now, since you've approved it, I'll make sure I tell Mr. Lipp, he did a nice job on this. This is only the second time he's been through this, and this is good work.
Item number four, acknowledgement of grants received.
I'd recommend, Mr. President, that you look down at your board, and if by consensus they are willing, you accept $292,433.26 worth of grants.
Great, thank you very much. Item number five, personnel report.
Mr. Disney?
Personnel report, we have the following resignations. Shelby Haas, who is a science teacher at the high school, Becky Kilgore, who has been our part-time math teacher at the high school, and Eric Pennington, who was a junior high head baseball coach. And under employment, we have four new people to employ, Jamie Coon, who is at cafeteria at Speedway Junior High School, excuse me, and one other resignation, and that is Marilyn Johansson at the junior high cafeteria. Then under employment, Jamie Coon, cafeteria at the junior high school, Don Owens, who's junior high baseball coach, and it's, he was head baseball coach, you approved him as the assistant baseball coach last time, but as you can see, the head baseball coach has resigned, so we've moved him up to that position. And Jacqueline Disney is the ninth-grade softball coach. I'd ask that you would approve the personnel report as presented.
I'll move that we approve the personnel report as presented by Mr. Disney.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Item number six, recognition of visitors and/or other business.
We, we do not, I see any visitors tonight, but I think Mr. Disney, who's been the center of the meeting tonight, has some other business that he'd like to share with you.
I do have some other business, and that is that the Department of Education has just released the Indiana Four-Star Schools, and I'm proud to announce that Speedway High School and Speedway Junior High School were recognized as Indiana Four-Star Schools for the 17, 18 school year.
So that's awesome.
We'll, we'll actually share more details about that and invite the leadership in on, at our next meeting to recognize that. Gone anyway, that's good. But that, that, that is really some fantastic news. I think that probably, just to explain the criteria, you've got to be in the upper 25% in straight-out performance language arts, straight-out performance mathematics, straight, the combination of passing both of those, and having a 95% participation rate, so that you can't just test a small amount of kids. Now, when you think about that, to be, any, being out of the upper quarter in any one of those, like back in the day before the, you know, where we'd lose out in attendance at the high school, attendance is not counted anymore, but it was, to be in all four of those is strong. As we look back, every year we look at it, our elementaries, it's nearly impossible for them to get there because of our English Language Learner Program. It's hard to make passing grades in English when it's not your language. But if you stick with us for three or four years, and you get to the junior high, or if you come to us in fifth and sixth grade and get to the high school, our program gets us there. So John has said this many times when he was the high, the junior high principal. Every academic achievement that junior high won or was recognized for, he gave credit to the elementaries. And I think equally, we would do the same thing, for we're all spark plugs, and when that high school and that junior high is recognized, we know it recognizes all of us. And so consequently...
Fantastic.
It is great. So that, I think, is the only other new business that we have. I am going to hope that you will sign claims so we can pay the bills.
Yes. Thank you.